The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. For items that are not public hearings, I will provide an opportunity for public comment. The roll call. Kathy? Thank you.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Kempin?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Shapke?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Sanzika, second by Mr. Edmonds.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shapke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Item number three, approval of the minutes of the June 25, 2013 special study meeting. Any questions, comments, or can I entertain a motion? Mr. Edmonds?
I move to approve as published.
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Krent, thank you.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shapke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Abstain.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
All right. Item number four, public comments. For items not on the current agenda, our new city manager would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. My name is Brian Kishnik. As the rules require, I live at 3555 Salem in Troy. While we've not officially vacated our house up in the Midland-Sagana area, we are here now on a permanent basis, moving back and forth, trying to transition, getting ready for the house for the new school year. My son Brennan's with me tonight, sitting through another planning commission meeting, city council meeting, and other meetings that he and my family goes to. But I just wanted to come tonight and say hello and say that we're officially here. It's been seven months of transition, so I apologize for not getting to the planning commission meetings in the past. Mr. Savadon has certainly impressed upon me, the work that you all have done at the council meetings. So now that we're here, I wanted to come and introduce and say that our door is always open and what a great job everyone's done. And it's been a real pleasure to transition here in Troy over the last seven months. People have been very receptive and very warm and very open and progressive and respectful during this first year of being the city manager of Troy, which is a great opportunity. And so I look forward to it. City Attorney Bloom has been excellent in helping us with our transition and very, very helpful in understanding the intricacies and the organization in the city of Troy. Having said that, I know we're not supposed to direct any comments to the people in the audience, but I will tell you that when Mr. Gershenson and a few of us met a long time ago, it was a great meeting to talk about this site that you're going to talk about tonight. It had nothing to do with the project that you're about to engage in and discuss, but the MJR project and the folks that are involved in that have done an excellent job. It's been great to work with, and it's a real great project for the city of Troy. And one of the first things I heard as I got here was how this town lacks a movie theater and how that site is in desperate need of enhancement. So congratulations to the planning staff and everyone who worked on this to make it come to fruition and bring it to you tonight. And I know that the staff works diligently to make it happen, as they do with their other projects in terms of creating an environment for investment. And they've done a great job with that. And we gave that presentation, I know maybe some of you have seen at the city council meeting, to show, you know, one of the things I always hear is, you know, we're just not receptive to business, we're just not open, we're not helpful, we're too much of a no. And that couldn't be further from the truth. It doesn't mean it's yes, but it means that we're going to work together to work things out. So with that, I want to say thank you for having me and letting me talk for a couple of minutes. My three minutes is probably up. So I'd entertain any questions, but I think with this heat, after losing power, I'd be more than happy to talk to you anytime. Just give me a call.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make any comments for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one, let's move to item number five. It's a rezoning request. This is a public hearing. Rezoning application file number Z-744. Proposed Belclair condominiums, east side of Rochester, north of Waddles, south side of Lamb, part of 4210 Rochester, section 14, from R1C, one-family residential district, to RT, one-family attached residential district. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, thank you. Good evening to the Planning Commission, to the audience. The first item tonight is a rezoning of a 1.1 acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Rochester and Lamb. If the Planning Commission would remember, the adjacent property parcels to the east has come in recently, the Planning Commission received approval for a nine-unit lot subdivision just to the east of this. This is the front parcel that fronts on Rochester Road. The proposed rezoning would resone from R1C to RT, and the applicant is proposing to do a nine-unit attached single-family development. The applicant has submitted a site plan as part of this proposal. I just want to remind the Planning Commission that tonight, the site plan is not under review. This is simply a consideration of the proposed rezoning. The site plan will come in for a full site plan review if the city council does approve the rezoning before us. In regards to the master plan, the site lies within the Rochester Road future land use category. It calls for a variety of uses with a pulsing at the neighborhood node intersections. In the middle of those neighborhood nodes where this is located, it does call for a de-intensification of uses and more of a transitional type uses, such as attached residential product. So the use as proposed for the rezoning is appropriate transition for the single-family residential neighbors to the east as well as Rochester Road to the west. So the proposed rezoning is consistent with the master plan. In regards to zoning and land use, if you look at the zoning map, just to the north and to the south is also RT zoning, as well as the land uses of our attached single-family to the north and south. So the proposed rezoning is consistent with surrounding zoning and land use. The Planning Commission will remember, when we redid the proposed, I'm sorry, when we redid the zoning ordinance, we put in standards for rezoning. There were not any standards for our straight rezoning in the previous zoning ordinance. So these were reviewed under the new rezoning standards, are outlined in section 16.03C. And these talk about consistency with the master plan, consistency with surrounding zoning and uses, public services and impact on public services, protection of public health, safety, and welfare. We found the proposed rezoning does comply with all those standards listed in the ordinance. As I noted, the site plan was submitted. I did make a few comments on the site plan. We don't need to go into detail of those. Those are just more for the applicant when they move forward with the actual site plan review submittal. The proposed changes, I recommend, the site plan should not be reflective of the action tonight of the Planning Commission. So we do find in summary that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the master plan, is consistent with surrounding zoning and land use, and does provide an appropriate transition from Rochester Road to the single-family developments to the east. So we do support the proposed rezoning.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Seeing none, is the petitioner here? Like to step forward?
Good evening. Joe Minnichi from Mondrian Properties.
Good evening.
Any questions?
Like to add to the presentation?
I think Mr. Carlisle did a wonderful job. It is consistent with the neighborhood around it, the condominiums to the south, condominiums to the north, and condominiums across the street. So I didn't think this would be too much of an inconvenience in the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Edmonds?
No questions, but comments. I applaud you. I think this is a really great development and consistent with the parcel to the rear and less curb cuts on Rochester Road. So you've achieved a lot of the things that we look for. Thank you.
Mr. Sanzika?
I just, I apologize. I don't recall if, are you the developer for the property to the east, the subdivision?
Yes. Yes.
I see you have quite an investment in that area, so I also applaud you for your investment and doing a nice job in that area.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Shapke?
Yes. Every time I go over there, when I was over there today, I've been over there several times, the area is just crying for development. And I think that that's really going to, that the new condos are really going to fit nicely in there. And so I again applaud you for the work that you're doing over there. I know you're doing it for profit, but you're also benefiting the city of Troy greatly, and we thank you for that.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I also want to applaud you for doing what you've done. I hope that you're going to be creative, though, in your stormwater management, as we discussed many times.
Actually, we combined them with the other subdivision, so we don't have as many ponds for the city to maintain.
Yeah, I kind of assumed that. I was going to ask you, and I know that is not a part of the site plan approval process, but I just wanted to let you know that I'll be looking forward to that.
Yes, there won't be any water retention on this site. That's already accommodated in the other site.
Okay. But again, I think I applaud you for it. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Anyone else? All right. Would like to have a seat. Now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the table.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
I'd like to move a resolution.
Mr. Hudson, go ahead.
Result that the Planning Commission hereby recommends to the city council that the R1C to RT rezoning request, located on the east side of Rochester Road, north of Waddles, south side of Lamb Road, part of 4210 Rochester Road, and section 14 being approximately 1.084 acres in size, be approved.
I'll second. Mr. Krent? Kathy?
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shapke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations. All right. Item number six, it's a preliminary site plan review, file number SP-986. Proposed MJR Theaters, Troy Grand Cinema, 16, southeast corner of Maple and Livernoy, 100 East Maple, section 34, currently zoned MR Maple Road District. Carlisle?
Yes. Before I go into my remarks, I do want to note that we did prepare a lengthy memo for Planning Commission's consideration tonight. I'm going to highlight some of those issues, and I'm not going to go into too much detail, but I can answer questions if the Planning Commission has any. I do want to note that though this is the first time the Planning Commission may have seen this site plan, it's not the first time that we have seen it, and we've been working diligently. And I want to thank the applicant for addressing many of our concerns that were raised initially. And we feel they submitted a site plan that really is a boon for the area. Just to summarize, the applicant is proposing a 16-screen, 3,200-seat movie theater development located at the southeast corner of Maple and Livernoy. This site is the former Kmart store site. The site is zoned Maple Road form-based district, and the proposed use is a permitted use within the site type within this district. In regards to the master plan, this site is located in the Maple Road corridor, future land use of the master plan. The theater use is the perfect type of development that's really envisioned for this corridor. The master plan really encouraged different uses, intensive development, and this use fits in line with exactly the type of development that's really needed in that area. Really, we find this could be, kind of spur the redevelopment in the surrounding area and really lend itself to additional economic development opportunities along the corridor. So while the use is desired and strongly encouraged, one of the prerequisites of the Maple form-based district in both the master plan and the zoning ordinance is the proper building placement. So that's really what the Planning Commission should be focused on as we review the site plan. Of particular interest, of course, is the relationship on Maple Road as well as Livernoy due to the form-based district. However, due to the existing subway and the Bank of America, realistically, the fitting of the building along Maple Road was not feasible. However, the applicant has provided a handsome elevation along the Maple roadside, as well as provided pedestrian access and pedestrian connection along the entire length of the parking lot from Maple Road to the development. In regards to the relationship on Livernoy, that is a key elevation, a key facade to consider. It's a gateway development to the city of Troy from the south. It's also one of the most visible elevations along this site. The applicant has given us a quality elevation along this elevation as well, and has placed the building at the required build-to-lime. All this really is a long way of saying that the applicant has met the building placement requirements of the form-based district and has met all setback, bulk, and other associated regulations. One of the issues raised during our review was the issue of traffic. The applicant has submitted a traffic study. The traffic study has been reviewed by our traffic engineering consultant, OHM. They do conclude with the findings of the traffic study that note that peak times for this development are on Friday evenings, Saturdays, and Sundays, which are not the peak time of Maple Road currently. The only issue that was raised in the traffic study and review was the need, due to proximity of the Maple Road access point, to put in a right-in-and-write-only diverter in proximity to that intersection. So the applicant will be required to do that moving forward. In regards to pedestrian, the applicant has provided a full sidewalk along the building. They also have provided the connection to Maple Road, as we discussed. The pedestrian spine from Maple Road is only five feet in width. We just recommend the applicant move that to six feet in width. In addition, there is a sidewalk along Maple Road as well in Livernoy. The sidewalk is currently five feet in width. The applicant is required to replace that to an eight-foot sidewalk. The area of sidewalk in front of the subway to that intersection, the city will pick up the remaining area indifference and connect the sidewalk all the way to the intersection. So there'll be a full eight-foot sidewalk along this parcel all the way to the intersection. The parking requirements for theaters is based on one parking space per three seats. This really is intended to park a site based on maximum occupancy of all theaters at the same time. However, due to staggered movie times, et cetera, it's very unlikely that the site will be fully parked at any point. Based on that, the applicant has submitted plans that show 770 parking spaces. This is a parking count based on a one-to-four ratio. They have used this ratio in their other facilities and find that it meets their needs and requirements. The traffic consultant has reviewed this parking demand and parking study and does find that they do agree with the applicant's submittal of this. Parking is a deviation that can be granted by the Planning Commission, and we do support the parking deviation for this particular use. In regards to landscaping, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan. The landscaping number is in compliance with the ordinance's requirements. The only thing that we do note is that they are noting that they can preserve a number of trees along the Maple Road elevation as well as along Livernoy. We do note that if this is the plan of action by the applicant, they need to provide some tree preservation plan or pre-preservation notes on the landscape plan itself. However, due to the needs of construction in this area, I'm not sure that these trees will really survive. And so if they're not worthy of preservation, we just ask that the applicant replace them with trees that meet the ordinance's requirements. That's an issue that really should be, could be worked out as part of the final site plan review. Lastly, the applicant has submitted a lighting plan. The lighting plan is in compliance with our ordinance, however, it is deficient in a few key information areas. We do ask that they do resubmit a full photometric and lighting plan as part of the final site plan's submittal. As the Planning Commission is well aware, the form-based districts have detailed site plan requirements. This is outlined in 5.06E. To be perfectly honest, the form-based district never really contemplated a theater use in this particular needs, as well as security needs of the theater and lighting requirements. So it was a challenge for us to work with the applicant and the applicant to meet our form-based district requirements, specifically for transparency and ground story activation. However, we do find the applicant has met those requirements and has submitted elevations that do meet our requirements. The only outstanding issue we have in regards to the design standards is that the parking needs to be screened along Livernoy. This can be done with either a three-foot knee wall and/or a landscaping hedge. That's what we recommend. So that should, some sort of screen wall should run along the entire length of Livernoy to screen that parking. So in summary, we strongly support this development. We feel this can be a real significant development for the area and lead to additional economic development opportunities and redevelopment along the corridor. We have listed six items in the report that should be addressed by the applicant as part of the final site plan submittal, but we are recommending preliminary approval at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Hudson?
A question for staff. When I reviewed this item in the attachment, I was handicapped by having a 19-inch monitor. So it was pretty difficult. But I've got a question regarding the stormwater drainage. There was an existing parking lot, and I presume it's still there, with drainage. Is the drainage going to be the same as it was with Kmart? Is the parking lot going to be disturbed with new drainage? And what is that drainage? Is there anything we can do with permeable surfaces or something to alleviate dumping water into a storm system?
Yeah, the applicant, they're engineers here, they can speak much more depth about what their stormwater management plan is. The applicant is using the existing stormwater facility on-site. It's not ironic, but the footprint of the building very closely mimics the footprint of the existing Kmart site. And the impervious surface is pretty close to existing impervious surface on the site. That being said, the applicant can address any specific stormwater requirements that they've had to meet, but they are going to use the existing facility on the site.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carlisle? Does the petitioner like to step forward?
Good evening. I'm Mike Mahalich. I'm the founder and owner of MJR Theaters. We have no issue with any of the comments from the consultants, so I think we can do those. We are kind of on a fast track here. I'd like to get in the ground as soon as we can, tear the building down, get in the ground, so we can be enclosed and not have to endure a lot of exposed winter construction. So we're willing to do whatever we have to do.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the petitioner? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Just a follow-up question on this stormwater retention area there. When I made the site visit a couple days ago, that is just overrun with fragamites that are like 12 feet tall. I hope at a minimum that those will be removed. Is that something we're responsible for, or is that something that the developer would be responsible for?
My understanding is, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
My understanding, and their engineer can speak more intelligently, but the existing basin is admittedly overgrown and needs to be improved. They will make improvements, including eradication of any unnecessary plant material.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson, did you have a question?
No.
Mr. Krent?
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to comment that I like the placement of the building being close to Livernoy. It allows for a walkable entrance to the building. I think that's great. Kmart was further to the east. And I just applaud you and welcome a movie theater. We've been lacking it for decades.
Well, thank you. And we're excited about being part of this community, too. So we're really looking forward to this. This is going to be an anchor for us, too.
Anything else? Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I guess this would be to staff. The existing retention pond, I assume, is going to be maintained by the city as part of the standard procedures?
If I may ask the engineer, what's the slope of that? What's the plan for me into the pond?
Good evening. I'm Brent LaVanway with Boss Engineering. With regard to the stormwater management, I want to go into just slightly more detail. We are going to utilize the existing basin. We are going to clean up the basin. We're going to do significant plantings around the basin. We're going to add stormwater pretreatment chambers to address the water quality entering the basin. This basin, it does outlet to the county drain in Maple, so we will have the plans reviewed by the county drain commissioner's office. And that review will take place, obviously, as part of the permitting. You know, we haven't discussed the maintenance responsibility of the basin. The basin will meet city of Troy standards for stormwater, as well as the Oakland County Drain Commissioner's standards for stormwater for redevelopment sites. So the basin currently is a 25-year design, which is the city's standards. So, you know, I guess at this point, again, we haven't discussed it. I don't know what the past history of the maintenance responsibility is for the basin.
I may follow up on it?
Sure.
Now, the key thing that I'm concerned about is the aesthetic value of the basin itself. Now, there are several good examples of how that was creatively done with some landscaping that was attached as a part of, and creating some very attractive-looking rather than just the basin itself. That's the reason why I was leading up to this question, who is going to be really doing that? And, you know, I can appreciate the fact that you're utilizing the existing asphalt. You're not modifying a whole heck of a lot, so I can't see where we'd be, or you could actually be creative in using some bio swales and doing some things of that nature. But at least if something could be done with that retention area, that would be a real asset, a real, I mean, right now, it's a real eyesore. I've been by there.
Certainly.
It's really pretty bad. And you're going to have, some of your patrons are going to be up against it. I think it would be kind of nice if you could do something other than the typical rectangular ugly-looking.
Sure. Understood.
Well, is there any response to that?
We have to do our detailed engineering. We've provided in the landscape plan, we're going to enhance the basin with significant landscape plantings. The slope on the west side, the side adjacent to the parking lot, is of fairly reasonable slope, and it has to be maintained. I mean, you know, it's all weeds right now and everything. So by simply mowing, having the landscape there, the open water is going to remain. That's, again, that's a stormwater quality feature, so that is intended to remain the way it is. We're adding the pretreatment chambers. So will the basin look different? Absolutely, it's going to look different than today. But is it still going to be a stormwater basin of essentially the same character? Yes, it is.
Well, I can only say that I've been here since '72 in Troy. I've never, ever seen any water in those basins. I mean, it's just unreal. But that's a quality of overdesign.
Yep.
I know it is, and you know it is.
Yep.
And that's the reason why I'm asking, and I'm concerned about that.
Sure.
That's one of the theories that I really look at, is stormwater management and creativity and trying to enhance the beauty of these things. So anyway, I know that it's not your responsibility, and whatever you can do, we really would appreciate. And we thank you for coming in. I think that's an excellent, and we're trying to be very open in having you come.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
I don't know if this is for the city or for you. I guess I'll direct it both ways. I was a little bit surprised at the bicycle parking requirement of two. I think most kids in the neighborhood may take their bicycles over there. Two might not be enough. Granted, that's what our requirements, according to the consultant's report, requires, but you better not bring one friend on a bicycle.
That's not an issue. We can make it as big as you want, but we have nine other locations, okay?
Okay.
And I can tell you that the bicycle traffic you get is very, very minimal. You know, that's a highly trafficked area, you know, that intersection. And my own personal feeling, if I lived across the street, I wouldn't want my kid riding a bike across that intersection going to a movie theater. But, you know, we'll put, bike racks are not an issue. are not an issue. I mean, six or eight or whatever, I mean, but I can tell you, we have them everywhere, and they're dramatically underused.
Okay, that was my only comment. The rest of it, I agree with some of the feedback that Ben had provided. I look forward to seeing the plan when it comes forward.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is not a public hearing, but I will entertain any comments from the audience. If anyone has one, please step forward and state your name and sign in, please.
My name is Bruce Gershenson, and I represent the landowners for the subject plan review. First of all, I want to say that we're delighted to have somebody of the quality of Mike Mahalich interested in proceeding with the development on this site. As all of you know, it's probably been four to five years since Kmart decided to close the doors and literally move out of the state of Michigan. We were then followed by probably the worst economic time outside of the Great Depression, and we've attempted during that time to get a number of retailers and other users interested in the property, unfortunately unsuccessfully, until Mike came along. We are very hopeful that the city sees this development the same way we do, as a tremendous boon to the area, as a testament to really the redevelopment, not only in the city of Troy, but in the state of Michigan. So, we are very, very pleased to have him, and I think very lucky. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, bring it back to the table. Entertain a motion. Mr. Edmonds?
Resolved that the Planning Commission hereby approves a reduction in the total number of required parking spaces for the proposed MJR Theaters Troy Grand Cinema, 16 to 770, when a total of 1,067 spaces are required on the site, based on the off-street parking space requirements for movie theaters. This 297-space reduction maintains a ratio of one space per four seats, which meets industry standards and is sufficient to meet parking demands on similar sites in Michigan, as described in a parking study submitted by the petitioner. This reduction meets the standards of Section 13.06, and yet further resolved at the preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed MJR Theaters Troy Grand Cinema 16, located on the southeast corner of Maple and Livernoy, 100 East Maple. Section 34 within the MR Maple Road District be granted, subject to the following. Number one, install right-in, right-out traffic divider at the westernmost entrance along Maple Road. Number two, provide an eight-foot sidewalk along Maple and Livernoy. Number three, increase internal pedestrian spine sidewalk to six feet. Number four, provide tree preservation plan. Number five, submit fixtures and detailed photometric plan. And, number six, provide parking lot screening along Livernoy through a hedgerow or screen wall.
I'll second. Is that Mr. Crin? Yes, second by Mr. Crin.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Chagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Crin?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a site condominium development. This is a preliminary site plan review. Proposed Adria Estates Site Condominium, seven units/lots, east side of Rochester, south of Square Lake, Section 11, currently zoned R-1C, one-family residential district. Mr. Carlisle?
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
I would like to recuse myself from this item. I live within a third of a mile from this, and so I'll be leaving the room during this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, I am for Planning Commission discussion is another Mr. Maniachi project. We're excited to see his investment in dollars in the community. The applicant is proposing a seven-unit site condominium project on a 2.9-acre parcel adjacent to Rochester Road. The site is zoned R-1C, and the applicant has applied the average lot size option as part of their application. All requirements of the R-1C district have been met. In regards to access, access to the development will be met via an extension of the existing Dorale Drive. Dorale Drive is a public road. However, the extension will be a private road, as Mr. Maniachi has done in previous developments. The only concern we have in regards to access is the applicant has shown an eyebrow on the curve of this private road. We have asked the applicant to remove that curb based on engineering standards, the speed of the road, as well as adjacent property. There's no concern about adjacent properties to the south. We've asked them to remove that. That'll give them some additional landscaping area to install in that particular area. The applicant has agreed to remove that eyebrow as requested. In addition, the applicant has provided a 12-foot emergency access point along Rochester Road. This was a request from the fire department because of limited access to the site. The applicant has provided that, and that does meet our standards and requirements. A landscape plan has submitted. It does comply with all our requirements for landscaping. The only thing we do note is that due to removal of the eyebrow, they can evenly more distribute the 55 trees that are going to go along Rochester Road. The plan has been reviewed under Section 10.02 of the Site Condominium standards. It does meet all standards and requirements. And, again, as noted, all lots meet R-1C zoning requirements in terms of setback, et cetera. The applicant has provided elevations for review, and, again, those meet all requirements of the ordinance. So, we do recommend approval of the site condominium, contingent upon the removal of the eyebrow along the curve, as well as redistributing the 55 trees along Rochester Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our consultant? Seeing none, invite you back up.
Good evening. Joe Maniachi from Underground Properties. I think Mr. Carlisle pretty much summed it all up. If you have any questions for me, we're happy to answer them. No?
I guess not.
Okay.
All right. Again, this is not a public hearing, but if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item, now is your time to step up. Seeing no one, bring it back to the table. Mr. Crin?
I'll move the resolution. Resolved that preliminary site condominium approval pursuant to Article 8 and Section 10.02 of the zoning ordinance as requested for Adria Estates Site Condominium, seven units/lots, east side of Rochester, south of Square Lake, Section 11, currently zoned R-1C, one-family residential district be granted, subject to the following. Number one, removal of the eyebrow along the curve and redistribute the 55 spruce trees along the entire length of Rochester Road.
Second, Mr. Stratt.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Chagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Has stepped out.
Excuse me. Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Crin?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Congratulations. Gordon, would you like to tell Don he can come back in?
I can do that.
All right, we'll move on to item number eight, public comments for items that are on the agenda. See anyone moving towards the microphones. We'll move to item nine, Planning Commission comments. Start with you, Mr. Carlisle. Do you have anything tonight?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Sanzika? Mr. Edmonds, any comments for this evening?
Oh, I have a comment. Thank you.
Mr. Shepke?
Uh, no. Thank you.
Mr. Stratt?
I'd like to welcome the city manager. I really appreciate his coming before us. We'd like to see you at one of our study sessions, maybe, and then we can have some communication with you in terms of what we'd like to see also, perhaps, how we can improve the city as well, or our perception of how within the area. But, we welcome you, and I think it was very good of you to come tonight. Other than that, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Kempin?
No comments.
Crin? Mr. Hudson?
Yes. I've noticed on the news the last week or two, there's been some concern, I think it's the city of Dearborn, because there's been some movement to make residential garages social centers. And, it's been back and forth, and I think the last go-around, they submitted it to their flood department for more information. Our church, for instance, I know there was a call for Habitat Humanity in the Mexican town to help renovate an existing residential garage for a social center. And, I'm thinking, outside of the great garage expose about five or 10 years ago, that there may be nothing in our ordinances covering that situation. I'm not sure that we need one, but I'm just bringing that to our attention, that maybe city staff should look into that and see if, whether it's a problem or not.
Any comment?
I would say our master plan and our zoning ordinance are both, one of the overriding goals in both documents is protection of single-family residential neighborhoods. So, we would take a very aggressive approach to this type of issue. I understand it was in the free, there was an article in the Free Press this morning on this very issue. It's a slippery slope, though. And, what I mean by that is, as a residential homeowner, you can have parties. You can have social events on your property. However, there's a point where, when is enough too much? And, there's measurables. There's ways that we can determine that based on how formal, how organized these events are. And, I can't think of an example that's happened in the city, but I think it's certainly something to be aware of, that this is trending in other communities. Again, we would, a quick answer to the question is, social clubs and religious centers are not permitted. They're permitted in residential areas, subject to specialist approval, and we would, the application would be required to go before the Planning Commission. We'd act on it, you know, on case-by-case basis. But, you know, we would aggressively enforce the ordinance and do with our means to ensure that it doesn't kind of get out of hand.
Did any of the articles or information you've read address parking? Did it say anything about parking?
I don't recall seeing anything about parking in there. That brings up another question.
And, that's a good point. That's one of the criteria, is you've got to provide required parking on the property.
Right, right.
You know, public streets are, if parking is allowed, it's permitted. However, required parking cannot occur on our streets. So, that's one of the, kind of, one of the hammers that we would have in this, amongst other ones.
Any other comments, since you have the microphone?
Yeah, I didn't mean to talk so long.
No, that's great, all right.
The last study session, we had a potential residential development on a relatively narrow lot. And, if you recall, it potentially was not creating a double-frontage lot, but it essentially created a double-frontage lot. And, the Planning Commission asked the petitioner to go back and consider other options, such as clustering, to kind of improve it. What this does is it kind of opens our eyes, I think, at least administratively, and all the easy parcels are developed, okay? The ones that are left, they're vacant for a reason. There's challenges. They're too narrow. There's wetlands. There's flood plains. There's what have you, utility issues. We need to ensure that when these challenged properties are developed, that there's no negative impacts on abutting properties. Again, protection of single-family residential neighborhoods is very important in both our master plan and our zoning ordinance. So, what we're going to do is we're going to put pencil to paper and come up with some language to kind of strengthen our ordinance, give us some protection, give the Planning Commission some flexibility, so we have these difficult, challenged sites. We've got the ability to get something better. So, we'll be coming back with some language.
Good idea. Lori, anything to say?
I'm invested.
Kathy, do you have anything? No?
I'm just going to comment on that. You know, the key problem that we had with that property was that the guy was trying to maximize that site in accordance with what we were doing. I mean, he didn't have to do that. And, I understand that, you know, we've got nothing but problem sites now, and we have to be flexible. But, boy, that was horrible because he was trying to maximize it. That's the key. Thank you. I was upset with him.
Well, I have nothing to say, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, Brian, for coming tonight.